Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristi Meiser. I am the president of the Morrisville Chamber of Commerce. We'd like to welcome you to this year's Morrisville Town Council Candidates Forum. Thank you all for being here. We are a not-for-profit business membership organization. This is intended to be educational and informative for the citizens of Morrisville. We are a nonpartisan organization, so just want to let you know. This is being recorded, candidates, so we will post it to our YouTube channel next week, and I will let you all have the link for that. Candidates, as well, you have microphones in between that you all can use. You need to just press that button so that we can hear you loud and clear. And this evening, Emily Ziegler is with us. She is with UNC Health and going to be our moderator for this evening. Thank you so much, and we've got a lot to get to, so I'm going to turn it over to Emily. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi, and thank you all for coming here tonight. I have a career in government affairs, and I always try to encourage my peers and locals. You think about the presidential race, you think about your congressional races. But I always try to tell my friends, the local races are where you get the most done. That's the most direct impact on your everyday life. So I appreciate you all taking an interest in your local council races. As Kristi said, I'm with UNC Health. We have a large presence here in Morrisville, so this is of personal interest to me. And also, while I'm not a Morrisville resident, I live in that part of Cary. Well, I drive a mile, and I'm in Morrisville, and I drive another mile, and I'm back in Cary, and then back in Morrisville. So I also have a personal interest in this. And I want to thank all the candidates for being here tonight, those who are currently elected, as well as who have chosen to throw their hat into the ring. It is not a small decision. It is a huge time commitment, it is a personal commitment. So thank you for being willing to do that and to serve your community. A quick overview for how this will work tonight. We are tight on time, so we're going to be very strict with our candidates. We have told them ahead of time what to expect. We will begin with an opening statement from all of our candidates. They will have one minute. And then we will go to questions. We will ask mayoral candidates a question, and then we'll ask our council candidates a separate question. They will have a minute to answer each question. Kristi is here in the front, and they have these yellow cards when you have 15 seconds left. And when the red cards come up, you are out of time. And I will cut you off at that point, to be fair to all of our candidates and also to keep us on time. So does anyone have any questions from the audience or candidates? No? Okay, great. Well, we will start with opening statements, and I will start with you, Mayor Colley. You have one minute to share an opening statement.
Well, there we go. I'm glad to start. Good evening, I'm your mayor, T.J. Colley, and it's been my honor to serve as Morrisville's full-time mayor for the past eight years and the previous forum council. My wife Kathy and I have called Morrisville home since 2007, and we've raised our three children here. The reason I ran in the first place is to help Morrisville be the town in which each of my three children will want to raise their own families. I'm running for reelection because I love this community, and I want to continue guiding our growth responsibly, protecting the quality of life that makes Morrisville one of the best places to live in North Carolina. Under my leadership, we've expanded parks and greenways, improved public safety staffing, advanced major road projects, and strengthened sustainability initiatives, all while keeping our small-town feel and sense of connection. I offer steady, trusted, proven leadership, someone who's out and about, engaged in the community for our families full-time, focused solely on serving our residents, not personal ambition. Together, we can keep Morrisville's progress moving forward. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you to the chamber and Emily.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Councilor Garamella, if you could hold our applause just due to time, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I want to say, Morrisville, where everyone belongs, from rising professionals to growing families and private seniors. I have built my family, I've been deeply invested, been there more than 20 years, and more than that, I have worked for 26 years on corporate life, finding solutions and creative solutions, and over a decade in town council. How consistent with this and what residents are looking for, and like, the number-one issue is less condition, more affordability, and a balanced approach. Unfortunately, our current mayor has missed those opportunities to deliver those priorities. I'm running to change that and to leave with collaboration and transparency and results.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move into our at-large candidates with Liz Dan.
Good evening. I'm Liz Dan, and I'm running for Morrisville Town Council, the at-large seat, because I believe our best days are ahead. That is, if we manage our growth wisely, we keep our focus on what makes Morrisville special. I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force. I was an intelligence officer where I briefed air crews on the threat worldwide and made sure they stayed out of harm's way. I also went to Harvard University, graduated, studied Asian and American history. And I'm someone who spent my career in federal service, helping communities make smart, data-driven decisions that strengthen livability and physical health. My family chose Morrisville because it's safe, close-knit, and forward-looking, and I want to keep it that way. It's also a place where everyone has a chance to be heard, and all ideas can contribute to the fabric of our community, make it stronger and more resilient. I'll work to ensure our infrastructure keeps pace with our growth and that our town stays fiscally disciplined, and that our policies strengthen small businesses and families' life. Together, we can build a future that's not just bigger, but better, because this is our town, our future. All right. I'm prepared together.
Thank you. All right. Harrison Kesslin, you're our next.
Hi, my name is Harrison Kesslin. I'm originally from Wilmington, North Carolina. I went to NC State for two engineering degrees, a bachelor's and a master's in engineering. I've lived in Western Wayne County for the last 13 years. I've experienced firsthand challenges of living here in a vastly, vastly grown population. I try to take the smart tunnel, can't rely on that. I ride the bus in the world as often as I can to avoid the I-40 traffic. I bike to my dentist on busy roads, and I walk down nonexistent sidewalks. Like many of my neighbors, I get stuck in traffic, and I dream of a Morrisville where everybody can safely walk, bike, roll, or ride transit to get to their destination. Imagine walking down a calm, tree-lined street, onto your local cafe or bakery, greeting your neighbors along the way. That's my vision, and that's why I'm running. I want to be the voice of the pedestrian and the transit rider, the community professional, and change the conversation so we can have more connected community.
Thank you, Mr. Kesslin. I'll now move on to Subarey Madarey.
Thank you. Good evening, Morrisville. I am Subarey Madarey, running for Morrisville Town Council for at-large position. I lived in Morrisville town for nearly 15 years, raising my family here, serving on the Smart City Advisory Committee as a chair, and volunteered across our town to make it more connected, safe, and family-friendly. I'm running because I believe Morrisville deserves a fresh leadership that puts the residents first. Leadership that focuses on the fiscal responsibility, traffic relief, public safety, and protecting our green spaces, while supporting the small-scale businesses and innovation. My vision is simple: a thriving, inclusive, affordable Morrisville where every family feels proud to live, work, and belong. Together, we can make a Morrisville more of growth, strong values, and community pride.
Thank you, Mr. Madarey.
Empowering Morrisville together.
Thank you.
Together we thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our District Two candidates. First, we have Yashi Avirajani.
Hello, everyone. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me. My name is Yashi, and I'm running for Morrisville Town Council because I love this town, not just as where I live, but where I have built my life, raised my family, and found a community. With a population that's grown from about 5,000 in 2000, in the year 2000, to over 30,000 as of today, Morrisville is one of the fastest-growing and most diverse towns in North Carolina. I bring concrete experience. I served on the Morrisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Advisory Committee. I helped introduce our Holy Diwali festivals, which now each attract over 10,000 guests annually. I have raised more than 17,000 for our local Morrisville bedrooms, and I continue to lead fundraising for disaster relief, from hurricanes in North Carolina to floods in India. I'm running because I believe in leadership that listens deeply, acts boldly, and leads with heart. Our growth must not sacrifice what makes Morrisville special. I want a town that is thriving and united and ready for the future.
Thank you, Ms. Avirajani. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, now, Ashit Patel from District Two. Your opening comments.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashit Patel. My family and I have called Morrisville home for over a decade now. I'm also a USRV veteran, where I served as a combat engineer. I did bridges and tanks in the army. I'm running for town council because I deeply care about our community. For the past several years, our town has rapidly grown, and while that growth has brought opportunities, it has also created real challenges. As I campaign around the town and meet people, listen to their concerns, two concerns I hear about over and over again: worsening traffic congestion and increasing strain on our environment. I want to ensure we continue developing responsibly while protecting the small-town character and sense of community that makes Morrisville so special. Most importantly, I'm running to serve, to listen, to work hard, and to make sure our local government works for our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Moving on to our District Four candidates, I will begin with Patty Chang.
Hi. Just wanted to stand up so I could see the people in the back. I'm Patty Chang. I, my family immigrated to Durham, North Carolina in the early '70s from Shenzhen, Taiwan, which is a sister city of Cary, North Carolina. I attended Durham Public Schools and NC State University, where I graduated in engineering, and I am certified as an enduring fundamental by the North Carolina Board of Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors. I've served on the Morrisville Budget Committee and on the Board of Adjustments. And I'm running because I would like to provide a new voice for, to represent the people of Morrisville. I would like to keep Morrisville affordable for our residents, and then use my skills to engineer positive change, taking in consideration the complexities of difficult NC DOT projects through Morrisville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chang. And for our final candidate, Councilor Vicki Scruggins-Johnson.
I think we forgot to turn this on for Patty's speech. Can you hear me now in the back? Okay, good. Good evening. My name is Vicki Scruggins-Johnson. Thank you to the Morrisville Chamber and our sponsors and all of you for joining us this evening. I'm a mother, a wife, and a neighbor who's called Morrisville home for over 20 years. Today, I'm a small business owner, my husband is a teacher, and both of my children graduate from Panther Creek High School. I was first elected to town council in 2013. I served on the Savannah Community Board and also the Public Safety Advisory Committee before taking that seat. In town, as a town council member, I listen, I ask tough questions, I ensure things get done. Your voice is part of Morrisville's strategic plans, our events, our projects. As the town grows, we must consider all costs to protect our quality of life. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, we will now move into our questions for the evening. I will begin with our mayoral candidates. I also realize I failed to recognize at the very beginning, there was a third mayoral candidate, Richard Reinhardt, who was invited tonight, but did not appear, but I do want to know that there was a third candidate, and he was invited tonight. So we will begin with our mayoral questions. We've heard through the opening comments so far that Morrisville has seen rapid growth in recent years. How would you balance the need for development with preserving the town's character and livability? Councilor Garamella, I will start with you.
Thank you. Growth is one of our greatest strengths, but also our biggest challenge. Morrisville location makes it more desirable for places to live and work, and that obviously increases a lot of pressure on housing and infrastructure and livability. The key balance is protecting and making Morrisville a special place with planning smartly. Includes tree canopy, open spaces, supporting the small businesses. I'm interested in revitalizing Park West and reuse of the creative uses of vacant space in perimeter, because that will increase our tax base and filling up the Macramin corridor. As a council member, I bring a dedicated thought process where I'm always looking more seriously at interest. And for me, you know, the growth is done right. Should enhance, not erode our character. And, and look at the...
Thank you, Councilor. Mayor Colley.
So growth is inevitable, but how we manage it defines our future. Here in Morrisville, our community came together to create a comprehensive land use plan that prepares us for the growth that naturally comes with having such a high quality of life. That plan guides every decision we make: where to improve roads, how many parks and pickleball carts we need, what programs to offer, and how Wake County schools plan new classrooms. It's the roadmap that keeps Morrisville livable and balanced. When my opponent votes to deviate from that adopted plan and to allow unnecessary apartments or added density, our schools get capped, our roads get clogged, and our quality of life sucks. I've always believed in smart, balanced growth, encouraging businesses and housing diversity, while protecting our neighborhoods and green spaces. Through our unified development ordinance, we've strengthened standards, expanded trees' preservation requirements, and ensured infrastructure comes before or alongside new development, not after. Our residents value connectivity, sustainability, and open space, and as your full-time mayor, I will continue to champion responsible growth and preserve our quality of life.
Thank you, Mayor Colley.
I know that someone confirmed that they could hear Vicki over there.
Yes.
I have a hard time hearing Patty and Vicki. Are their mics on? You can move the mics.
You can move them. They can move the mics between them?
I don't have it on.
Oh, go ahead. Okay. Thank you for letting me know, and if anyone else has trouble hearing, please unmute. Okay, we're going to move on to our council candidates, starting with our candidates for District Two. The question is, what infrastructure investments do you think are most urgent over the next five to 10 years? Mr. Patel, I will begin with you.
The most urgent investments are the ones that protect and improve what we already have. I think it is important to stay on top of fixing and maintaining our roads, improving our stormwater systems so people don't flood, and making sure our public safety services have the tools they need to respond quickly. We should also improve transportation options, like expanding access to smart shuttles, so more residents can get around in the town without any more cars in the road. I believe we have to be proactive, not reactive. Fixing what's aging now is your waiting until it breaks. That approach saves money in the long run and keeps Morrisville running smoothly. And we can do it by focusing on efficiency, maintenance, and partnerships, not taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Ms. Avirajani, I'll move to the question to you.
Thank you. There's a variety of things that need investment, but I believe the most crucial is improving road capacity and intersections. Morrisville has become a hot zone for car accidents, jammed traffic, and dangerous driving against pedestrians. As we approach the six-year anniversary of my son's near-fatal car accident at the intersection of Davis Drive and Morrisville Parkway Road, I speak not just as a candidate, but as a mother who has witnessed firsthand how quickly a normal day can turn tragic. That experience stays with me every time I drive through town. It's why I'm committed to prioritizing safer intersections, better signal timings, and infrastructural design for both drivers and pedestrians. Public safety must come first before new development, before expansion. The town council has a responsibility to protect our residents, and that means addressing the dangers on our roads with urgency and compassion. By investing wisely now in traffic flow...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to our District Four candidates, and I will begin with Councilor Scruggins-Johnson.
The infrastructure investments that I believe are the most urgent over the next five to 10 years include an investment in our roads, in our parks, and in our town facilities. The first thing is the Public Works Building that needs to be replaced should be finished in the next three years. This project was originally a $35 million project, but this year we acquired a building and, for $10 million, and reduced the project to a $20 million project, saving our tax money for future projects. So that needs to be completed. There are two road projects that need to be completed to reduce congestion. That would be the McCrimmon Parkway flyover to alleviate the Church Street and Scream intersection, and the NC-54 Aviation Parkway lane expansion, including sidewalks. I would also invest money in a Pew House because history is important in Morrisville. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now for our at-large candidates. I'll start with you, Mr. Kesslin. Sorry, Patty. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Please go ahead.
Okay. Now, for this question on infrastructure investments, my highest priority would be those roads in Morrisville that are at the intersection of NC DOT roads. Morrisville was historically a farming community built at the intersection of state roads. So that project that's been on the books for some time, that's concerning a lot of residents about how the Airport Boulevard might cut through the middle of Morrisville and how that would affect our current neighborhoods there, a lot of issues there need to be resolved. We need to address this project at McCrimmon and NC-54 Church Street that has been dragging on for years. Okay? And in general, I agree with Vicki on these points about improving the Public Works Building, and then just, let's see what's that. There are other things that need to be prioritized and...
Thank you, Ms. Chang. Sorry again for my oversight. I apologize. That was on me. Okay, we will now move to our at-large candidates with Mr. Kesslin.
Our top priority over the next decade should be reducing dependence on personal vehicles. That means investing in sidewalks, greenways, bike paths, and reliable public transit that people can actually count on. While road widening alone does not solve congestion, McCrimmon and Aviation Parkway projects are important because they'll finally add pedestrian connections where none exist today. When paired with better transit and more walkable neighborhoods, these investments aren't just about infrastructure, they're about freedom, safety, and opportunity. They'll give everyone in Morrisville the ability to move safely and conveniently, no matter how they choose to get around here.
Thank you. Mr. Madarey.
Thank you. So I do compare Patty Chang and Vicki on the later issues, two projects related to McCrimmon, and also when I was knocking the door, there was a residence has a concern about the trap tree problems also. So there is a lack of transparency and also fiscal responsibility this is bringing again and again. So next 10 years, what I want to prefer is Morrisville's top priority must be fixing the traffic and strengthening the public safety. Over the next decade, we need to complete key road constructions, improve the intersections, and expand sidewalks for safer mobility. At the same time, we must invest in police and fire and emergency services to keep pace with the growth, all done with the fiscal responsibility. And smart planning need to ensure every tax dollar delivers real value to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Dan.
This is going to come as no surprise. Our top priority must be managing the congestion that we're experiencing in Morrisville. Morrisville needs to finish the long-delayed projects to ease congestion and improve safety, particularly around McCrimmon and around Aviation Parkway. But there are other solutions that should be considered: bikeways that leverage greenways, the roads, and the roads in a safe way, mobility hubs that can connect us to our businesses and jobs and RTP, are just two ideas that I would propose to town council. Another major priority is the town center. The town center should be a place that draws residents together, a walkable hub with restaurants and green spaces and local businesses. It's about connectivity and community and supporting economic vitality. It's a place to meet up with friends and get to know your neighbors. It's an idea that I've already pitched to town council that taps into the vibrant history, and Vicki just mentioned this. It's going to generate pride and excitement as you enter our downtown. It's putting the Maple Pew House to good use, finally, making it an art hub and a coffee house. A much-needed meeting space. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next question for our mayoral candidates. We've heard, again, traffic congestion is a major concern for residents. What specific steps would you take to improve mobility and reduce congestion in Morrisville? Mayor Colley, I will start with you.
Thank you very much. Traffic is one of our residents' top frustrations and one of my top priorities. We've already secured millions in regional funding for road projects through Campbell Partnerships with DOT. We will continue to focus energy on our transit-oriented development area of town to make sure we are ready to accommodate the bus rapid transit and the passenger rail station that our staff, our council, and I have all been working so diligently to secure. Despite anything you may have heard about those projects, those projects are still moving forward. Nothing has been lost. Looking ahead, I'll continuing, continue to champion data-driven mobility solutions: expanding the smart shuttle, improving signal timing, adding sidewalks and bike lanes, and completing missing greenway links, so that people can have safer, greener trips. I will continue supporting our Parks and Recreation Department to encourage more biking and walking to visit our town, new town center, and everywhere else in town. Every improvement is about reclaiming time for our families and keeping Morrisville moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Garamella.
Yeah. Traffic condition remains one of the top frustrations of residents. We have projects like Macramin and Aviation getting delayed for years and years, and this is due to a lack of follow-through that's not acceptable. As mayor, I will bring the urgency and accountability and strengthen our voice at Campbell, where regional transportation priorities are set, and ensure Morrisville gets its fair share of investment. I'll advocate for bus rapid transit, but which goes through the town and not currently on the peripheral of the town. Push for sidewalks and greenway connectivity, and support 54 widening. More than that, it's also about traffic lights, the signaling, and the intersection improvements, which are needed mostly in many places. And finally, I'm also interested where the Church Street and Town Hall also needs to be done. We need a leadership that only plans, but delivers. But because traffic does not wait, and neither should wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, moving back to our council candidates today. The next question is, beyond policing, what initiatives would you champion to strengthen community well-being, such as mental health, youth programs, senior services, and others? We will begin with our District Four candidates, and Ms. Chang, I will start with you.
Okay, beyond policing initiatives for the strengthening community well-being, I do believe that our police and law enforcement should be better, could be better trained on how to identify issues with people they might encounter that has, that are mental health issues. For example, if somebody calls in the 911 and say that they hear voices or they have something in their brain, that may not be a good idea. It's not a good idea to direct them to complain about incorrect phone calls, improper phone calls. Perhaps that's really, there's a need for mental health identification and providing a path for how that should be directed. There are other, I think it's great that we have youth programs and senior services, but those are not areas where I feel like we should be increasing taxes for those projects.
Thank you very much. Councilor Scruggins-Johnson.
So beyond policing, what initiatives would I champion to strengthen community well-being? First of all, I would explore opportunities for youth engagement and shadowing and mentor programs that would help youth find ways to learn, grow, and express themselves, and also speak out.
Excuse me, Emily? Yeah, we're having a lot of traffic here in either candidate from down that end of the table. Vicki, can you turn the microphone a little closer to you? Sorry. Yeah, that's okay. I didn't realize the ones in the council chamber are very, very sensitive. Is it okay if I start again? Sure. Should Patty start again too, then? Because we couldn't hear her either.
Okay, we will let Patty give the case, or we get... That's fine. We'll let them both restart.
Okay. So policing initiatives for championing and strengthening community well-being. Can you hear me now? Okay. All right. So I do think it's a great idea that we have these youth programs and senior services to provide just, you know, activities for the community, but that's not an area where I'm willing to increase taxes on. Okay? One thing about policing, it would be great if we trained our public security enforcement officers to be able to recognize issues with mental health problems and provide a path where they can be directed, that's not sending them into just a court case or on a path to jail, when they might really need some mental health, you know, services in that way. But, you know, there's a lot to be considered in how much we want to increase our budget for that.
Thank you very much. Councilor Scruggins-Johnson?
Thank you. Beyond policing, the initiatives that I would like to strengthen are youth engagement. I'd like to see a mentorship program for our youth so that they can learn and grow and explore opportunities with professionals to explore career... and um explore um opportunities um with professionals to explore careers and ideas about paths. The seniors, I would like to see more social opportunities. Right now, we have a lot of programming, but we just need to have them engage with others for um mental and social well-being. I'd like to see more trees so that we have more passive recreation. And also, I'd like to invest more in our small businesses because small businesses create a sense of well-being in and of themselves as we um support each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our at-large candidates, uh, we will start with Mr. Matarini.
Thank you. So, uh, when it comes to the true public safety means caring for people. So that's where I mainly emphasize when it comes to the mental health, so we need to focus more improving the uh clubs, like the youth clubs and listen, we had the Morrisville Youth Clubs by partnering with the HSNC and Sevo International and there are various yoga nonprofit organizations that collaboration will also reduce the tax dollars spending at the same time engaging the systems in the town, colla, in the collaboration vein. That's one thing. So even when the Congressman, uh, when Deborah Ross was in the, one of the meetings, I also advocated that how we can engage these uh topics in the school level and even the town level. So by investing in preventing the connection and compassion, we can make a Morrisville to town where every resident feels a support and respected and safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bam.
Public safety will always be essential, and I'm proud to have received the endorsement from the North Carolina Police Benevolent Association. Safety and community go hand in hand, and I've been studying my concept.
Oh, did you turn? Okay. That's not, what was I saying? Okay. Thank you for allowing me to start again.
Public safety will always be essential, and I'm proud to have received the endorsement from the North Carolina Police Benevolent Association. Safety and community go hand in hand, and I've been studying this concept of blue zones. All that address certain factors. Blue zones are those areas around the world that have the largest concentration of centurions, those people who live to be a hundred years old. Only twenty percent of our longevity is determined by genetics and eighty percent is determined by how we live. So things like Whole Foods, family, community connection, a sense of purpose, spirituality, and physical and natural mobility. Morrisville has a jumpstart in all these factors, the farmer's market, volunteerism, walking clubs, sports teams, and the MFC classes. And as the Chair of the Parks and Rec and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee, I've been collaborating with the Senior Advisory Committee um to provide transportation and onsite support for our seniors at town events so they can stay connected. And someone recently suggested to me that we establish an adopt a grandparent program, bridging generations and a win-win for community connection.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bam.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we'll let you remind all the candidates, if you're not active using your microphone, uh, just turn it off for that moment in time so we don't get any more feedback and can try to prevent more of the stopping and starting going forward. That would be great, thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Kessling, question to you.
I believe in design over enforcement, creating environments that naturally promote safety and well-being and reduce the need for intervention. Calm, well-lit, walkable neighborhoods and streets allow children to explore safely, seniors to stay active, and neighbors to build stronger relationships. They create a sense of belonging and shared responsibility for community well-being that no policy alone can achieve. They reduce stress, improve mental health, and give people of all ages access to the connections that make life meaning, meaningful. And especially, give our youth and seniors access to connections that have been denied for too long.
Great. Thank you very much. And we will um finish out this question with our District Two candidates, beginning with Ms. Abajaran.
First, I want to expand at X, oh my God. I want to expand access to mental health services and crisis support, especially for youth and seniors. I work for Duke's Learning and Wellbeing Department where my day-to-day work focuses on helping medical students maintain safe learning environments, manage stress, and reach their education goals. That experience has shown me how critical it is to build systems of care and emotional support before people reach a breaking point. I also prioritize your youth mentorship and after-school programs that give our next generation purpose, and senior service enhancements that ensure older residents stay active and engaged, building on what HAPRCS, REC's department already does well. And finally, I've continued to invest in the cultural and recreational events that brings us together. I've introduced several of Morrisville's now signature ethnic celebrations, including Holy Diwali at Ascine, first hand how these events unite thousands of residents across backgrounds. Community well-being starts with connection and that's what I.
Thank you, Ms. Abajaran.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Patel.
So public safety is more than just law enforcement. It's about helping people stay connected and supported and people looking out for one another. We can do a lot to strengthen that by supporting youth, family, and seniors in ways that bring people together without adding big costs. I also see this firsthand through my work as a youth basketball coach and with a, with a youth engagement and development program that focuses on developing literacy skills, personal discipline, and teamwork for middle and high school students. Programs like that keep kids connected and confident, and they prevent problems before they start. As a town, I would like to partner more with faith groups, nonprofits, and community organizations to expand youth activities, senior programs, and mental health outreach. When we support each other and give people positive outlets, we build stronger and safer Morrisville for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Okay, moving on to some fiscal questions for our candidates, uh, starting with our mayoral candidates. Uh, with limited tax revenue for the town, how would you prioritize spending to balance the needs of infrastructure, public services, and community programs? Counselor Garamella, I will start with you.
The easy way to fund is to raise taxes. The right way is to be smarter with our money. Every year, we budget one and a half cents for transportation and sidewalks, one cent for parks, and one cent for real property acquisition, clearly showing priorities. I'll continue to find more creative ways through contributions that we get from grants, federal model taxes, federal funds, and also developer contributions when they make the projects. The other way is we can fill the twenty percent vacancy at the perimeter and expand the McCrimmon corridor to expand our tax base without burdening the residents. When our mayor proposed a nine-cent tax increase and a trash free, I fought to lower the taxes by four cents instead. Your hard earned dollars mattered, and I'll keep protecting them.
Thank you. Mayor, it's you.
To start, it is absurd to say that I proposed a nine-cent tax increase. Staff presented multiple options. As a fiscally responsible mayor, I make sure every tax dollar works hard for our residents. We prioritize core services first, public safety, infrastructure, and parks while investing in innovation, sustainability, and people, because those are what strengthen our community long-term. We've maintained a triple-A bond rating from all three agencies, balanced budgets year after year, and ensured competitive pay for our staff, all without unnecessary tax increases. But fiscal responsibility isn't just about saving money, it's about investing wisely to move Morrisville forward. Progressive leaders and organizations like the Sierra Club, PoliNC, and the Wake County Democratic Party who have endorsed me remind us what our, that our values must drive our budgets. I'm the kind of leader who builds consensus and then takes bold, decisive action to make things better now, not someday. And I'll keep doing that to improve our town and enhance the quality of life for every Morrisville family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Moving to our council candidates, also a fiscal question. Would you support raising taxes or fees if necessary to fund projects, and if so, under what circumstances? For this question, we're gonna begin with our at-large candidates, and I will start with you, Ms. Bam.
Thank you. Raising taxes should always be the last resort, only after we've exhausted every other option. Um, I prioritize competitive grants. I worked in that field when I was in the federal government, partnerships, businesses, and creative financing before asking residents to pay more. I'm also mindful of those who are on fixed income. I'd love to promote Wake County programs, things like the Circuit Breaker Tax Deformment Program that helps seniors from sudden increases. Fiscal responsibility means finding solutions and balancing ambition with compassion.
Thank you. Mr. Kessling.
I would consider supporting a tax increase only if the benefits clearly outweigh the costs. Transparency and accountability are key. If we're asking taxpayers to invest more, we must show exactly what that investment will accomplish, whether it's safer streets, better transit, or stronger local business. Any proposal must align with our shared vision for a healthier, more connected Morrisville.
Thank you. Mr. Matarini.
So for my case, I would only consider raising the taxes as a last option and only for essentially it's like a public safety, core infrastructure. So that's underlying. That is a fiscal responsibility, the first one, I would consider the people first. We, the people, Morrisville, we, we, by and in the town council, public speaking also, we oppose the tax rising unless until if you don't have a fiscal responsibility, transparency, why, where they are spending. I have requested for the financial report, I haven't received so far. So there is a transparency is lacking. Before that, we must cut waste, use funds wisely, and pursue the state and federal grants. My priority is protecting the taxpayers while ensuring the Morrisville invests smartly, responsibly in the future, in its future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our District Two candidates, uh, starting with Mr. Patel.
I don't believe in raising taxes unless it's absolutely necessary. Families here are already dealing with higher costs for groceries, housing, and gas. The town should be doing everything it can to do within its means, just like our residents do. We all know what it's like to stretch a dollar, and our government should do the same. That said, if there is ever a situation where a modest targeted tax adjustment is the only responsible option, for example, to protect public safety or to repair particular infrastructure, then we have to be transparent about it. Residents deserve to know exactly why it's needed, how much it costs, and what they will get in return. My promise is simple, I will treat taxpayer dollars the same way I treat my own, carefully, transparently, and always with the goal of delivering the most value for every penny spent.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Ms. Abajaran.
My goal is to keep Morrisville affordable, that means always trying to keep taxes as low as possible for our residents. Families shouldn't have to choose between staying in the community they love and managing rising costs. At the same time, responsible governance sometimes means keep making tough decisions when essential services or safety are at stake. I would only consider raising taxes or fees if there is a clear demonstrated need and if every other funding option has been explored. Any increase must be transparent, data-driven, and directly tied to tangible benefits for our residents, like safer roads, upgraded infrastructure, or expanded public services. When we ask residents to contribute more, we owe them accountability. That means clear communication, community input, and ensuring that every dollar is used efficiently and equitably. Fiscal responsibility isn't just about cutting costs, it's about spending wisely to protect our quality of life while keeping Morrisville affordable for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our District Four candidates to round out this question, starting with Counselor Scruggins-Johnson.
Thank you. Um, as a council member, I've had the um very difficult decision to um consider raising taxes, and I have in the past. But please understand that I always um was very open with understanding and communicating the clear community benefits that tax adjustments would um be mindful of. We must deliver long-term value like congestion alleviation or emergency response improvement. One of the considerations is affordability within the town. I've researched what the impact is on taxes to our most vulnerable populations. We have an affordable housing uh policy in place now, and we also are looking at seniors. House Bill fifty-nine was introduced in twenty-twenty-five along with House, Senate Bill one-fifty-nine, which will increase the eligibility for our senior population to leave the poverty tax burden. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Chang.
Can you hear me? Okay. Um, within the last five years, the population of Morrisville has increased from thirty thousand people to about thirty-three thousand, that's a ten percent increase. Meanwhile, our town budget increased from thirty-seven million to sixty-three million. That is a seventy percent increase for a, a ten percent population increase. And our, let's see, our taxes increased by forty percent in the last five years. So we received a tax increase in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-four, the twenty-twenty-four year, okay? That puts the average tax bill for any Morrisville household at about one thousand five hundred dollar additional per year. And because of that, and because many people cannot afford that, I will not approve a tax increase in the next four years. It would take a public bond of.
Thank you very much.
To improve.
Okay. Our candidates have done such a good job of staying on topic that I'm gonna add a question, one that they have been prepared with, but I'm gonna add one to the list of what we have planned to ask today. So starting with our mayoral candidates, how should Morrisville address environmental concerns such as storm water management, green space preservation, and tree canopy loss as development continues? I will start with you, Mayor Colley.
Uh, I'm a proud recipient of the Sierra Club um endorsement. I've been working really hard with Stormwater. I was one of the founding members of a rain committee that's residents active improving the environment. So being passionate about the environment and making sure that we're doing our job as stewards of the environment and Morrisville is very important to me. Um, I think we need to continue investing in that space. To that end, I think it's really important that we create a sustainability department. Right now, we have a sustainability coordinator who's doing great work without a whole lot of resources. So with that said, I think that our sustainable future is very positive, and I'm looking forward to uh supporting it even more than we have done, because that is the most important thing, is to take care of the land that's taking care of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Counselor Garamella.
Repeat the question.
Sure. How should Morrisville address environmental concerns such as storm water management, green space preservation, and tree canopy loss as development continues?
Yeah, for me, the main important thing, we have learned from the lessons of Hurricane Helen. Stormwater is one of the main components, and we have already allocated funds. Uh, and the, the taxation of stormwater is correctly done because it helps each one of us. Uh, more than that, I would say our pre-canopy can be expanded by having more land for parks and open spaces. Uh, we have secured a good amount of parks and open spaces, and I want to ensure that those areas are done. And also, more important is teach just not about the sustainability from the town, talk about sustainability from each and every resident. Rep, and only when the residents do together, sustainability increases, and I'm all for environmental protection.
Thank you, counselor. Okay, moving on to our council candidates, a question in the same vein. Would you support initiatives to make town operations and new developments more sustainable? And then how would you balance that with other needs of town priorities? Mr. Kessling, I'll start with you.
So the overdevelopment of car-centric housing has cut down trees, worsened traffic, and strained schools, infrastructure, and services. If we want to reduce our traffic congestion, reduce our carbon emissions, and strengthen our community, we must prioritize pedestrian-oriented development to reduce our reliance on personal vehicles.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Matarini.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Would you support initiatives to make town operations and new developments more sustainable, and how would you balance that with the other needs of the town?
So my answer is, we must step back and reevaluate the approvals of the plans, because last time also when I ran, I mentioned that, don't put the cart in front of the horse. So first, do the strategic development planning and then plan for it. So I am full advocate for the green spaces and. last time also when I ran, I mentioned that, don't put the cart in front of the horse. So, first, do the strategic development planning and then plan for it. So, I am full advocate for the green spaces and protecting the tree canopy. So, that's where the Morrisville is the one of the top, one of the top town in the, if you take to the Wake County, so it lost a lot of tree canopy. So, that's where I agree with Satish. We, the responsibility starts from our home. And then, it also leverages to the town when it is managing the budget, how do we improve this one, before your political agenda implementing in the Morrisville area? If you take it, all the expenses and spending, where it is going? We've been discussing from the last 10 decades, so we spend in spending, but Morrisville town lost a lot of...
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you.
Ms. Dan, question for you.
Yes, thank you so much. Growth is often a sign of success, but it also brings with it challenges and opportunities. And so, Morrisville's growth has to be balanced in preserving our small-town character, but also preserving our healthy environment. Balance is essential, so Morrisville becomes a destination for consumers, not just a pass-through for travelers and workers. And cost is always a challenge, but I'll advocate for the development so that they feel their fair share and they pay for ways to ensure that their building maintains the integrity of our health and our environment. We have to protect our green spaces, our setbacks, and our native canopies, and neighborhood livability. So, with a thoughtful approach to our planning, especially as we bring on our new high school and our middle school, we'll have to work to build stronger relationships and partnerships with our neighboring towns and cities for mutual regional solution and ensure that the DOT also supports our growth in a way that is sustainable for us. Our focus should be on quality of life and maintaining an environment for our kids, our families, and all of us.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on to our District Four candidates, I will start with Ms. Chang.
Can you read the question a little more tightly?
Sure. Would you support initiatives to make town operations and new developments more sustainable, and how would you balance that with the other needs of the town?
Okay, generally, I like the idea of being more sustainable, but to me, that's not necessarily increasing costs to provide for sustainable products. I like the idea of investing in solar panels for long-range, long-term electric gathering, electric supply gathering. But U V chargers probably should be limited since it's not providing the service for people who can't afford electric vehicles. I like the idea of designing neighborhoods that are more walkable and livable and less dependent on individual vehicles, and also to have developed a smart shuttle in a way that it could be dependable and reliable and less costly with improved ridership to encourage people to participate in our shuttle system.
Thank you, Ms. Chang. Councilor Scroggins-Johnson.
Thank you. So, this is sustainable actions by the town and new development. So, currently, the town of Morrisville does have a sustainability plan. We have a sustainability coordinator, and the town has been looking at water conservation, conversion to LED lights, as well as looking at solar panels on our municipal buildings. Could someone please sound, that's a little annoying? The development community has also been requested to look at sustainability options. And in the way to incentivize our developers to adopt better solar panels and so forth, we could reduce fees. So, we can shape behavior, and that's just an example, it's not the only example of sustainable options, but they could also include a bus stop. Adding bus stops improves our mobility by taking cars off the road. So, by looking at the types of fees that we charge in line with sustainability...
Thank you. Thank you so much.
...helpful. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Patel.
So, Morrisville has the lowest level of tree canopy rate in the entire region at 34%, and highest level of populous in the city, even higher than Raleigh. And we need to address that, starting with careful zoning and encouraging projects that fit our long-term plan instead of overbuilding, constraining our roads, schools, and infrastructure. We need stronger community engagement before projects are approved. I believe residents should have voice in what happens to their town, and the town should look closely at the impact on traffic, green spaces, and public services. We also need to make sure that developers are doing their part, contributing to infrastructure improvements and tree preservation. I would like to also see more walk-in of neighborhoods and developments that truly benefit residents. Growth is important, but it has to be the right kind of growth, the kind that makes Morrisville a better place to live, not a busy...
Great, thank you, Mr. Patel. I'll say Ms. Abirjan had told us before the panel she was not feeling well. She has stepped away for a moment. If she comes back in, we'll give her the opportunity to answer the question as well as join the closing statements. But we are now going to move into the closing statements. Before we do so, I first of all want to thank our partnership with the town of Morrisville for helping put this on, for recording the program, the staff, they're great partners. I want to recognize elected officials in the room. We have Wake County Commissioner Cheryl Stollings, thank you for joining us, and Morrisville Town Council members Amber Body and Steve Rao. Have I missed anyone? Okay, thank you all for coming. So, we have now given our candidates 30 seconds for closing statements, and this is our opportunity to share their last remarks for you and really make the case as to why they should be the candidate that you vote for today. We are going to start with our district candidates, starting with District Two. Ms. Abirjan, I'll give you another second. I'll start with Mr. Patel. Your 30-second closing remarks, thank you.
So, I'm running for town council because I believe in public service. I believe that public service means putting people before politics and using common sense in every decision. My goal is to make sure residents' concerns are always front and center in our decisions and protect that small-town character that drew many of our families to this area. Outfit values I learned at the Army, discipline, integrity, responsibility, and service before self in every decision I make. If you believe in those values...
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Thank you. Ms. Abirjan, 30 seconds. If you'll grab the microphone so the group can hear you. Perfect, thank you.
Sorry, guys, I'll just read this slow. I know we have all heard several answers to several questions tonight, so I'll keep this to the point. If you take anything away from my responses, I hope it's this. I'm running on a platform of transparency and service as a neighbor to all of you. I have the experience to lead with heart and integrity. I served on the Morrisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Advisory Committee, introduced Holy Diwali celebrations, and now bringing over 10,000 people together each year, raised 17,000 for our veterans, and supportive relief efforts from right here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Moving on to our District Four candidates, Councilor Scroggins-Johnson, we will start with you.
Thank you. I'm an innovative, collaborative, and practical leader. I look at all sides of the problem, and I ask you, what do you think? We do that in many ways, in the hall, down the street, at the meeting, but your voice is important to me. I seek your vote on November 4th, 2025. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Chang.
Hello, I'm Patty Chang. I've been involved in being a engaged citizen in Morrisville Town Council since probably 13 years ago, as Steve Rao, Councilmember number nine. Okay? Let's see. I want to take an approach to solving problems for Morrisville that could be more complicated by getting a lot of public input, collecting data, that information that needs to be resolved before addressing complicated problems.
Thank you, Ms. Chang.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Moving on to our three at-large candidates, 30 seconds for your closing statements, beginning with Mr. Materetti.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank you for town staff and also Chamber of Commerce for taking this time, presenting us. Thank you. And thank you all the Morrisville residents who are here and watching us. Thank you. I am Subharadi. I'm running for Morrisville Town Council at large because I believe in responsible growth, safer neighborhoods, and stronger sense of community. With my experience, smart city advisory chair, and years of community services, I will bring fiscal responsibility, transparency, and reward to the town hall.
Thank you.
Please check my website, Subharadi Morrisville.
Ms. Dan, please, 30 seconds for a closing statement.
I think you all agree that Morrisville is a great place to live. It's safe, it's close knit, and it's full of opportunity. My goal is to keep it that way by leading with integrity, fiscal responsibility, and a commitment to our aesthetic and green space, and practical solutions that make life better for businesses and residents. Together, we can ensure that Morrisville grows. Will we grow stronger and not just larger, and we live longer through Blue Zone initiatives? I'd be honored to earn your support and your vote for the at-large seat on the Morrisville Town Council. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for having us. Thank you, Ms. Dan, and Mr. Kessling to close out the at-large candidates.
I appreciate the opportunity to come share my vision with you. I encourage you to come with me afterwards so I can expand on it. If it speaks to you, I'd be honored to have your support in this election, and together we can create a more perfect Morrisville where we can meet our neighbors not on the highway, with our favorite parks and cafes. Thank you.
Thank you all. And to close it out, our two mayoral candidates joining us here tonight, closing statements, beginning with you, Councilor Paramella.
I'm running for mayor because I want young professionals, families, and seniors to be able to live and stay in Morrisville. After my son graduates from UNC, I want him to come home, buy a house, and build his future. I don't want to lose our teachers, seniors, or first responders because they're too expensive in here. I'll be the mayor for all of Morrisville, build a community that works for everyone, not just a few who can afford. I would be honored if I could own your trust and your vote. Together, we can keep Morrisville a place where everyone can call home.
Thank you. Thank you, counselor. Mayor Colley, closing statement.
From some of your earlier comments, if creativity and storytelling were a qualification for office, I'd have some competition. I'm Mayor TJ Colley, and I've dedicated the past 12 years to serving Morrisville full-time with integrity, accessibility, and results you can see. From new parks to safer streets and smart growth, we've accomplished a lot together, but our work isn't done. I ask for your vote on November 4th to keep Morrisville's progress moving forward with proven positive and trusted leadership. Thank you all for being with us tonight.
Thank you, mayor. Do you want me to close it out, Kristy? Okay, perfect. Well, I just want to thank you all for being here tonight, for engaging. I encourage you all to leave here, share what you have learned with your neighbors, your friends, your family, and I encourage you all to go out and vote on Election Day. Thanks for coming, and I'll turn it over to Kristy to close it out.
Thank you, Emily. Let's give Emily Ziegler a big round of applause. Thank you so much for offering to the candidates. I do want to just also say thank you all for being here tonight, taking the time out of your schedules to come learn about your candidates. That means so much for the Morrisville community that you live in. I do want to thank Brandon Zunema, our town manager, for being here, John Letney and Giselle Rodriguez, as well on town staff. Aaron, thank you so much for recording as well. And let's give one more big round of applause to our candidates up here. That is it. We hope you have a great rest of your evening and hope to see you soon. Thank you so much.